Good evening. This regular meeting of January 9, 2017, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Bytine.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Seagert.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
Great, thank you. We're joined tonight with a group from George Washington Middle School, so if you would please come up and help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am Data Gooch from George Washington Middle School, and we are the Moxie Squad, and we help with intercultural competence at our school.
I'm Emma Chambers, and I'm a 7th grader.
I'm Simon, I'm an 8th grader.
I'm Gavin, and I'm an 8th grader.
I'm Grant Parr, and I'm an 8th grader.
I'm Alec Parkin, I'm a 7th grader.
I'm Shona, I'm a 7th grader.
I'm Kyla, I'm a 6th grader.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on December 12, 2016, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved the minutes of the regular meeting on December 12, 2016, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Got a public hearing.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed school calendars and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the proposed school calendars and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing and allow for public comments.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are in a public setting, so anyone wishing to approach the Board and speak to us regarding the school calendars can step forward at this time.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school calendars as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve 2017-18 and 2018-19 school calendars as presented. Any discussion?
Just real briefly, very similar to the calendar we have this year in many aspects. School start date by law, earliest that can be, is August 23rd. You'll notice both of these years, school years start on the 23rd. We take some pretty traditional breaks, tend to end somewhere around just after Memorial Day, which both of these calendars do. Obviously, the new piece is that there are two calendars, or two years' worth of calendars instead of one. We get increasing requests, year after year, to know dates of school starts, or holidays, or breaks, well in advance, I suppose, as people look for bargains and that sort of thing as they plan trips. So it seemed to make sense that we would pass two calendars at once, and really, it's almost a third year of a similar calendar, because it's so similar to this year. And then after that three years, then we would go back at some of the surveying and polling and saying, you know, asking people how that worked, and what changes they might want. We also have been a little bit hesitant in the past because of not knowing what that school start date might be, but we're fairly confident that the 23rd will remain that date. So you'll notice on the calendar, an awful lot of similarities. We really tried to make it the same as we possibly could, particularly with the spring break. As you all know, that's been the issue that we've pulled people on most in the last couple of years, is whether or not to have a spring break, and support for spring break outweighs the support for not having a spring break. We thought that having it multiple years in a row on the same week helps possibly some of our community partners who might wish to plan some programming during that week, so that students who are in town might, you know, have some access to whether that be Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, that sort of thing. So that's sort of our rationale. Talked about this with exec council, district leadership, we've talked about it in our ed programs, subcommittee meetings as well. It was in the newspaper, we did have approximately 100 responses online with people asking questions or making recommendations in regard to the calendar.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Board salutes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
This past Thursday, Mr. Barton, Ms. Ryan, and Superintendent Ryan Gansen, myself, were pleased to attend a special celebration at Eisenhower School. There was a very special gift given by Chad and the Chandle family through the Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools to create an endowed Judy Chandle tribute to Teachers Fund. The gift was made in honor of Judy Chandle, who served as a teacher for over 30 years. She taught for over 20 years in the kindergarten program at Eisenhower. She passed away in 2011 after battling cancer, and this gift was given in recognition of what would have been Judy's 70th birthday, and to show support for all teachers and students in the district. The annual earnings from this endowment will be used to provide classroom grants for teachers in our district, and will be a great way to help teachers continue to provide the best learning environment possible for students. So we very much thank the Chandle family for their generosity, and it was a really nice ceremony.
That's great.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bytine.
I have one. This board salute goes out to our food service people, to Joanne Frank, Jackie Aiman, Julian Manders, and Lisa Miles for a successful state review, which is a regular visit to review compliance. Following this visit, the office was specifically commended on six items: extra efforts to verify family applications, very thorough documentation with a very low rate of error, safeguards and accountability practices in place, menu planning excellence, participation in the community eligibility provision plan, program, and an active school wellness policy. Congratulations to a job well done.
Great, thank you.
And I have one. Special thank you to the John Deere Foundation for its continued support of our student success in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. Thanks to the company's support, seven of our district schools received a scale-up grant for the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council, got a bonus thanks to John Deere, a permanent site license to the ST math software that aids students in developing math skills. Software is valued at over $123,000 and provides a great benefit to our classrooms. Thanks to the John Deere Foundation for its support of both STEM and our Dubuque students. So thank you to John Deere.
Great. Any other board salutes? All right.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in open forum. Anybody wishing to address the Board on any matters, feel free to approach the podium.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any Board members wishing to remove any items in the consent agenda for separate consideration? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to Facilities and Support Services, Mr. Bytine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I go to the motions, just a quick word. One of the topics that was discussed at our Support Services meeting related to the future, hopefully future construction of a pool facility for the district. A calendar, if you will, or a suggested timeframe has been put forth by staff, and we looked at that. It will not garner a vote this evening, but it is one that I think we're all eager and anxious to see a plan go forward that will allow us to have a competition facility here in the district. So if there, I know there's been a few calls and a few questions about it. I think having a schedule, or having at least a semblance of a plan for a schedule makes a lot of sense. It puts a stake in the ground, and hopefully water in the ground eventually.
We already have water.
Yeah.
That's the water we can't find.
Right, exactly. Very good, thank you. Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve change orders two and three to Conlin Construction Company on the senior renovation addition project in the increased amount of $11,412.30 and $63,249.23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change orders number two and three to Conlin Construction Company on the senior renovation and addition project in the increased amounts of $11,412.30 and $63,249.23. Is there any discussion?
I just would mention that, as has been the case on that site, there is always issues regarding the soil, and having to augment the soil, move soil, whatever, to get down to bedrock. So that's the reason for these increases, is as much as we enjoy seeing the adjustments down, occasionally we have a few that go up. So that's the explanation.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hoover School Bus Drive Improvements Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Eastern Iowa Excavating in the amount of $5,619.12, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Hoover School Bus Drive Improvements Project and authorize payment of final project cost to Eastern Iowa Excavating in the amount of $5,619.12, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Irving School Parking Improvement Project and authorize payment of final project cost to McDermott Excavating in the amount of $18,150.13, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the Irving School Parking Improvements Project and authorize payment of final project cost to McDermott Excavating in the amount of $18,150.13, in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Any discussion?
I'll just mention that this is the final step, if you will, in two projects that were completed recently, and that certainly increased the safety of bus access, as well as the student access and egress to the buildings, and kudos to our grounds folks for managing these projects, and I think more or less coming in under budget and on schedules.
Great, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Alta Vista Campus Boiler Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 13, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Alta Vista Campus Boiler Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 13, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Any discussion? Bill, that might be approaching the limit on number of words in a project name, though. It's getting close. Start to come up with acronyms for them, would you? That'd be very nice, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, estimate total cost for the Eisenhower School Cooling System Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 13, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Eisenhower School Cooling System Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 13, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education tentatively approve plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hoover School Roof Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 13, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total project costs for the Hoover School Roof Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as March 13, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Any discussion? I've just pointed out with this and the previous two motions, as you can tell, projects continue to start. This is always kind of the first step in moving those forward, but we keep Bill and Charlie plenty busy, I know, even though senior project is often...
Yeah, what are you doing here? Shouldn't you be...
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the Third Amendment to Lease Agreement on the Dubuque Soccer Alliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Third Amendment to Lease Agreement with the Dubuque Soccer Alliance. Any discussion?
Stan, do you want to just mention, this is...
I'll have Kevin talk about that. It has to do with water.
Right.
It has to do with water sewage fees charged by the city to the soccer alliance. The city actually approached the soccer alliance and said, "Your fees, if you would have the district take over those payments." We said yes to that as a partner, but the soccer alliance does have to still continue to pay us for that amount. So the way the contract was drawn up with our attorneys is, we will notify the soccer alliance of that fee on a monthly basis. Once we notify them that, we will withdraw those dollar amount from their account, and then we will go ahead and pay the city. So there's no fee or cost involved for the district. It just helps them reduce their stormwater fee at that location. And because it is our property, we are allowed to do that.
So win-win.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the request to donate math manipulatives that are no longer of use to the district to community preschools.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the request to donate math manipulatives that are no longer of use to the district to community preschools. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I was hoping for some discussion on that.
I'm sorry, they're really cute.
These little figures look...
And they come in five colors.
And we're getting rid of them because many of them look like Tom Barton. So we decided...
Like Tom Barton playing his ukulele.
Now you see why I didn't open it up for discussion. You can...
Sorry. The Board of Education, I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Mr. Keller.
Good evening, Superintendent Ryan Gansen, Board. Just a quick few comments on the quarterly budget report. As you know, we are currently six months through our fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, and I'm happy to say that, looking at early projections of the general fund, with our current expenditures and the encumbrances that are out there for the remaining part of the year, we look, hopefully will be at or below our projected costs for the upcoming year, so that's good news. On the revenue side, property tax collections are at 50%, or a little bit higher for the three funds, which again is good news, as we are 50% through the year. They may be that high, just because I believe there's some delinquent funds that have been, must have been collected by the county, that's what would get it up to the 50% level. So that's good news as well. And then a couple other reminders, as usual, with the management fund expenditures, as you know, looks like most of that is already spent out, and that's because we pay for our insurance and the retirement payments to staff in July, which is the first month of the year. So a big portion of those expenditures take place in the early part of the year. And then the last comment is, just a reminder, you see a large expenditure and encumbrance in the sales tax fund. That is because of the senior high project. Not all of those dollars will be spent this year, but we put the whole purchase order contract in as an encumbrance. Any questions on anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Ed Programs Policy Strategy Committee report, Ms. Whitman.
Ed Programs, we talked a lot about the instructional material selections, review, and reconsideration, kind of wrapping that up. We had David Olson, the Director of Secondary Education, address the Board. He reported on the research related to the procedures for curriculum development and selection. It is determined that parents are included in curriculum studies, but the actual adoption must be with the responsibility of the employees and the administration. Parents are notified of course content. After listening to David and his people that came and talked with us, the Board does feel that the district is doing their due diligence on topic selection, and there is going to be no changes to the policy or procedures. We feel everything that, you know, they have everything in place, and when people were talking about the line, evidence of a line for language, it was determined that there is no evidence anywhere to determine a line. We leave it up to the curriculum people and the experts, the educators.
Yeah, I would just add to that. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, from the committee to the parents that certainly asked for the reconsideration, as well as asked us to look at the policy. I think we've thoroughly have reviewed the policy and find that the policy itself is good, but any review always tends to turn up specific items that we think we can do better, and I think what I heard was, in terms of accessibility for parents to those curriculum and that assigned reading selections, that's something that we will continue to do, make sure our website is really clear, so that parents don't have to hunt and peck for that, that we can make it very, very obvious. But at the end of the day, as you know, we as a Board have decided that that call for what's offensive or what crosses the line is really not the responsibility of the Board, that's the responsibility of a parent. Our job is to make sure that, one, they know about it, and, two, that they're aware of the choices that are available to them. There are choices to select alternative reading, there's choices to leave it as is, or there's choices to elect a different course. So all of those give the flexibility and the responsibility back to the parents where it belongs, it doesn't belong with a Southern member school district, so... But we did ask, we really, one of the other takeaways I think that we had was really making sure that our staff are actively engaged in conversation with parents when those types of issues come up. I think that's something that we can always do better at. Even one conversation with a parent that doesn't go as we would like it is not good. And so our challenge to our staff is to make sure that we are open and engaging in those conversations, and then secondly, asking the parents, "Hold us accountable, let us know when that's not working," because we obviously aren't party to those often. But we very much want to make sure that we're fulfilling our responsibilities and that policy in that spirit. So again, I want to thank everybody that was involved, and I think the process certainly proved itself out and served everyone well, but it was a great conversation to take a dive at that policy and find, obviously, some areas that we think we can do better in, but thank you.
And we had great participation with parents and our staff.
Yep.
It was great input.
Great. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. New business.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr., and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr., and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board. Let me read it, and then we'll vote on it. Whereas on Sunday, January 15, 2017, our community will celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., beginning with a gathering at Jackson Park at 12:45 p.m. in a march to St. Luke's Methodist Church to witness the awards in the annual NAACP tribute contest. And whereas on Monday, January 16, at the annual Martin Luther King Jr. birthday breakfast will be held at the Grand River Center at 7:30 a.m., when keynote speaker Vincent Bakoti, Ph.D., will present the dream we need to keep alive. And whereas in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the King Center is urging people to reject all forms of hatred, bigotry, and prejudice, while pledging to do everything in their capacity to make America and the world a place where equality and justice, freedom and peace will grow and flourish. And whereas we invite all citizens to join in keeping this dream alive by joining in the celebrations, dedicating their lives to creating the community of Dr. King's dream, and pledging a nonviolent way of life in their dealings with all people. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim January 15 and 16, 2017, as days of great celebration in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Kramer, I'll give you this. As always, no charge for my signature. You're good. Thank you.
I thought there was a delivery charge.
I move that the Board of Education approve the National School Counseling Week proclamation, and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the National School Counseling Week proclamation, and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board. Let me read that to you. Whereas school counselors are employed in the Dubuque Community School District to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become protective members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Donahue, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim February 6 through the 10, 2017, as National School Counseling Week. And I understand that Deb Klein, Becky Felonzer, and Steph Weber are here to accept this. Thank you, ladies, thanks for what you do. Thank you. Thanks. Oh yeah, we'll vote on that, so... I didn't sign that one, no. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? I hope not, thank you.
Ooh, we don't have to take it back.
Hate to have to redact my signature, yeah. Likewise, no charge. All right, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education allow student #707997 to reenter the Dubuque Community School District effective...